Hi, Dory.
Hi, President Ho.
All right, it's seven o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. Good evening again, everyone. This is City of Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Today is Monday, January 24, 2022. Dory, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, President Ho?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Brandt?
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Dick? Commissioner Miranda?
Present.
Commissioner Quinones?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Shook?
Here.
Commissioner K. Seven? Commissioner K. Seven? Commissioner Watson? Commissioner Watson? Okay.
All right, thank you, Dory. Apologize for my dog barking. All right, communications commissioners. Have you attended any meetings or wish to report any communication to the commission since last, our last meeting on January 10? I see none, so very well. Considerational minutes. So, Dory has forwarded a draft copy of the minute from our January 10 meeting. If you have any correction, deletions, or anything you want to bring to our attention, please raise your hand. I see none. So, I informed Dory that I believe Commissioner K. Seven was at the last meeting. So, she says she will make the changes. So, I will sign the minutes after that changes made. Otherwise, I declared the minutes approved.
Hey, President Ho, sorry, sorry, this is K. Seven. Commissioner Watson, myself, and Commissioner Dick, we are on the wrong link, so we are going to join shortly.
Okay. All right, great. So, everybody's here, great. So, go. So, other than, so anybody has any, let me go back. Anybody have any communications you want to report? Just wanted to double check. Any other comments regarding the draft minutes?
Except, I had one, this is K. Seven. I think I have, yeah, Dory, and I exchanged emails, too. She's marked me as absent. I was present, I was a little late.
All right, okay, yeah, she will make that change. And then, otherwise, I would declare the minutes approved with you showing as present. All right? Thank you. So, let's move on. I'm going to open public hearing. Rudy Hill. So, let me provide a description of the hearing process. First, the staff will give their staff report. Then, the applicant will make their presentation. After that, we will take public testimony from the phone lines. So, after following public testimony, staff will be given time for any follow-up or response to the public testimony. And then, the applicant is given an opportunity to respond to all testimony. And the calling number for public testimony is 503-966-4101. Again, if you want to call in for public testimony, the number is 503-966-4101. So, before we begin the public hearing, I have some required statement that I need to read. First one is, the applicable review criteria are those listed on page one of the staff report, available on the City of Tiger website under Public Hearings and Notices. Number two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria listed on page one of the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations they are believed to apply to the decision. And number three, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford a decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. All right, and here are some procedure items. First one is abstention or conflict. Do any commission member wish to abstain or declare a conflict interest? If you do, please raise your hand. I see none. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge any member of the planning commission for bias or conflict interest? So, if you do, please stay so using the public dialing number. Number two, ex parte contacts. Does any commission member wish to report any ex parte contacts, which are oral or written communications about the hearing with persons other than city staff or the city attorneys? If you have ex parte contacts, please raise your hand. I see none. Has any commission member visited the site of the proposal? If you have, please raise your hand. Okay, so Commissioner Miranda, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner K. Seven, and Commissioner Ho, myself, the four of us have visited the site. Thank you, please lower your hands. Jurisdiction. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission? Again, if you wish to challenge our jurisdiction, please stay so by using the public testimony calling number, 503-966-4101. All right, at this time, I would like to introduce staff member, Associate Planner Agnes Lindor, to present the staff report. Good evening, Agnes.
Good evening, President Ho and commissioners. I'm going to share my screen. So, thank you again for the record. My name is Agnes Lindor, Associate Planner. And the item before you tonight is the Rudy Hill Plan Development Project. So, the general location of the project is south of Fern Street and west of Ascension Drive. There's no physical address. The site is currently vacant. It's approximately 2.15 acres in size, and the zoning is R7. So, the proposed applications for tonight's hearing are a consolidated plan development review, which includes the concept plan and the detailed plan, a subdivision, and a sensitive lands review. So, the proposal includes a nine-lot plan development with subdivision. The lots that are proposed range from 3,504 square feet to 5,166 square feet. There is a private street that serves the development located within tract A, a stormwater facility that's located within tract B, and park, open space, and preservation tracts within tracks C, D, and E. The sensitive lands review is for the steep slopes that are on the site. Majority of these slopes are located on the southern half of the lot. So, just a little bit more detail about each of the tracks. Tract C is the largest track that contains a trail and open space with a sitting area. Tract D is a small park that will contain a park play structure. And Tract E is a tree preservation track that will contain some benches for sitting. Part of the project is an extension of the public sidewalk on southwest Fern Street. And then, there will also be a public access easement that will be provided across all the sidewalks within the development, over the trail in Tract C, and over the park in Tract D. So, this is the concept plan that is being proposed. This is the largest tract C here shown. So, Fern Street is north, so this would be the south and east part of the lot. This is the water quality facility here located kind of at the corner of Fern Street and the development. The small park is right next to it. And then, the tree preservation tract is located between lots two and three. So, here is the detailed plan. It just provides additional details such as lot size, proposed potential driveways, that kind of a thing. So, as part of the plan development review, through the plan development process, the applicant can elect to use an increase of 30% in density. So, for this development, the possible lots that could result from this development would be 10 lots. The applicant has elected to apply for nine lots. Part of the plan development process is the applicant can request certain flexibility to different development standards. But in exchange for flexibility to the standards, they need to provide some kind of a public benefit that serves either the general public, the plan development user, or both. So, I'm going to go through each of these requests that have been asked for. The first one is to the minimum lot size. The lot size within the R7 zone is a minimum of 5,000 square feet. So, the lots that are not 5,000 square feet are lots 1 through 4 and 6 through 9. The next standard is the minimum lot width. So, the minimum lot width in the R7 zone is 50 feet. And what is being proposed is a range between 12 feet and 48 feet for lots 1 through 6. I did want to kind of explain that a little bit because I understand that 12 feet might seem like overly narrow lot width. So, I'm going to go back here. And so, the lot width that's 12 feet is for this lot 5. The reason why it's 12 feet is because the way that we measure lot width, it's at the front setback line. So, in this case, it would be 15 feet back from the street property line. So, as you can see, the measurement would be from about here, kind of at the neck of the lot. And you can see that the lot does have sufficient area to accommodate a house. It's just setback from the street. So, the next two relate to setback requirements. Lots 2 and 3 have street-side setbacks that are required to be 10 feet. The applicant is requesting to reduce that from 10 to 5 feet. And it would be, just to go back, it would be these two lots, and it would be this side here. This would be the front, and then, this would be the street side that would be reduced from 10 to 5. And then, the minimum side setback would be for all other interior side setbacks, and that would be for all lots, lots 1 through 9. The rectilinear standard is not meant for lots 5 and 6. There's a certain requirement that lots can't exceed lateral changes in lot lines. So, we don't want lot lines doing weird, weird shapes. But lot 5 and 6 are located at the end of the private street and do not meet that requirement. Lastly, the minimum lot frontage, which is 40 feet, except that at the terminus of a private street, it can be 20 feet. So, what's being proposed is 12 feet to 20 feet for lots 4 to 6. And again, those are the lots that are located at the end of the private street. So, as you can see, these are the flexibility standards that are being requested. I did want to note that most of the request is for standards that are really internal facing, and they don't really, or they're not really noticeable on the outside of the development itself. So, they're more internal to the actual development itself. And these are also critical in preserving as much of the natural elements of the site as possible. So, on to the public benefit. In exchange for flexibility, the applicant is proposing to preserve a majority of the steep slopes and mature trees that would be located within Tract C and E. There's approximately 350 feet of soft-surface path, trail, and central seating within Tract C. There's also connections that are being provided to the west and south for future trail connections, and also a connection to southwest Fern Street through the sidewalks within the development. There will be a park that will be provided within Tract D that will include a play structure. And again, the tree preservation tract located in Tract E will contain bench seating, and that is located on the west side of the development between lots 2 and 3. So, there will also be an extension of approximately 100 feet of public sidewalk on southwest Fern. A public access easement and maintenance agreements will be required for the trail. And Tract D, which is the park, the sidewalks within the development and the trail within Tract C will all be placed within a public access easement. So, this is just showing you again the areas of where the public benefit is provided. So, this is again Tract C, the park kind of closer to the street with the play structure, and then, the small or tree preservation tract located between lots 2 and 3. So, I did want to note that there were several public comments that came in today that have been forwarded to you. I believe they were from Joan and Edward Little, Shelley Chase, Janice V. Stans. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Alexis and Nathan Gibson and John Lewis. The comment letters expressed concern related to stormwater, building height and setbacks, density, access, traffic, as well as tree removal. And as I mentioned, you should have all of those public comments. They were sent over earlier today. I got ahead of myself. So, this is just another exhibit that was provided with the application showing the play structure for Tract D. So, with that, the proposal provides sufficient detail and information on how all of the applicable criteria and standards are met or can be met through conditions of approval. There are adequate public facilities to serve the proposed development. The public benefit that is proposed is sufficient to warrant the type of flexibility that's requested, and all of the impacts from the development will be mitigated to the extent practicable. So, staff has reviewed the proposed plans and recommends approval of the Plan Development Review Concept Plan, the Plan Development Review Detailed Plan, the Subdivision, and Sensitive Lands Review, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. And I did want to note that staff will be looking for actually two motions. The first one would be on the concept plan. And then, the second motion would be for the Plan Development Detailed Plan, the subdivision, and the sensitive lands review. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Agnes. Before I ask commissioner if they have any question for staff, I just want to apologize, I forgot to, before the hearing, declared their name and the case number. So, it's Rudy Hill subdivision. It's a Plan Development Review PDR 2021-2 subdivision, SUB 2021-2, and Sensitive Land Review SLR 2021-3. And sorry, I missed that. And so, commissioners, do you have any question for Agnes at this time? We'll have more opportunity to ask her a question later on, too. But if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Dick, please go ahead.
Hi, Agnes. I was wondering if you could tell us how many of those trees are being removed for this development?
Sure, let me just pull up the pull up the staff report here. Sorry, just one second.
Also, how many trees are in that area? And then, the number that will be removed?
So, in the staff report, I can check the number of trees, but this is considered like one stand of trees. So, they looked at it as a whole canopy. So, right now, the canopy that's on the site is 93,000, approximately 93,000 square feet, and over 50,000 of the canopy will be preserved.
Okay, thank you.
Before I get to Commissioner Brandt, since we're on the topic of a tree, Agnes, maybe the applicant can answer that. So, in the final plot drawing, it shows there are three trees between lot 2 and 3 on Tract E. But in a previous drawing, the arborist drawing, it shows those trees are being removed. So, are those three trees on Tract E going to be preserved or are they going to be removed? Because this seems to be some inconsistency between the drawings.
Hello, I'm Wade Willers. I'm the developer on this project. Regarding those trees, we take the arborist's advice for what trees are safe to keep and what are not, and we're trying to preserve as many as possible.
Right, so the arborists, so in one drawing, you show you are removing those three trees. But in the final drawing in preliminary landscape plan, those three trees are shown standing after everything's been done. So, are they going to be removed, or?
Excuse me, sorry, Commissioner Ho, but I think we need to keep things in their place. So, that's a great question for the applicant. So, I would save that for when the applicant does their presentation.
Okay, I would do that, thank you.
So, we don't get that with remote, you know, it's tough with faces popping in and out and trying to keep things in order. So, if we could just finish with questions for staff, that would be, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, great. Commissioner Brandt, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I have a question about the public access to these three parcels. This is directed at the city. And if the city can't answer, then we can take it to the next question as a session. So, we have this Tract E, so it was a D, E, and C. These all look to be internal facing with no public infrastructure connection. So, I guess my question is, in terms of proportionality for the project to meet community needs and general welfare, how does that square?
So, the proposal does include a sidewalk that basically leads from southwest Fern Street through the development that connects all of those tracks together. The park, which is Tract D, will have a public access easement. So, even though it is located in this development, it will be accessible to the public, as well as all of the sidewalks within the development and the trail that's proposed within Tract C, which again will also, in the future, if there's development that's adjacent to it, could potentially connect.
Okay, so these, this bark-chip trail, 350 feet or so, won't connect to any other public infrastructure at this point?
Yeah, well, besides Fern Street, yes, it will connect to Fern Street.
Right, through the sidewalk system, okay. I just wanted to verify that those, in the drawing here, I wish I could tell you which page it is, but I'm looking at it, and it shows that they paired the dead end at the lot line. So, I was just curious if they go anywhere or not because I don't believe there are any existing trails there.
Yes, not at this time. Once, if there are other properties that develop to the south or east, we can require a connection through.
Commissioner Miranda, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up a little bit on Grant's question, and then I have a sidewalk question. The surrounding properties that those particular trails could possibly connect to in the future, are those lots subdivisions currently? Or are they raw land? Or are they single-family homes? Because from my site visit, I believe the one of the connections is next to a subdivision that's pretty recent. So, I'm curious.
Yeah, so I'm looking at an aerial right now. And basically, the lot that is adjacent to the site that's to the south and east is a large lot that could potentially be divided in the future. I believe there is a single house on the lot. So, yeah, at this time, it's just basically a vacant lot with a single detached house on it.
And then, my sidewalk question is, it sounds as though there's an additional 100 feet as a part of this project. If the subdivision was smaller, R7, you know, seven units, or as stated on the the real estate sign, five or six units, would the requirement be 100 feet? Or would there be no sidewalk requirement beyond the curb cuts around the private street?
So, I'll go ahead and defer. So I'll go ahead and defer that to Jeremy. Typically, development is required to only improve the frontage that they actually have. So, you know, they're obviously going beyond their frontage, but I will let Jeremy Tamargo. Address more of your question.
Good evening, commissioners, again Jeremy Tamargo, engineer with the city. Agnes, that is correct, so if it was just a straight subdivision application, they would only be responsible for the specific frontage. Of their proposed development, so the hundred feet is additional public benefit that wouldn't otherwise be required. With a straight subdivision application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My questions.
Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead.
I have a quick follow up to that, because I think I figured it out, but at first I was a little confused, because it's actually a hundred feet of sidewalk, but a hundred and fifty feet of street improvements, is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shook, please go ahead. I think you're on mute, Craig.
Sorry about that, good evening. I have a question about the path in the public tract, who's responsible for maintaining that path? Is that a homeowners association or is that the city of Tigard?
Jeremy, do you want to touch on that?
Yes, that would be all under the maintenance responsibility of the homeowners association. So the city maintenance obligations would only be the right of way improvements and sidewalk.
I see, so and then on that path, it goes up a pretty steep hill there in greater than twenty five percent, I believe. Are there design standards for paths like that, or is that just to clear the area out and put some chips down and you're good? Or there are step requirements or anything like that?
There are design requirements, but just to comment in general that your natural trails and paths generally are not required to meet your. A D A standards, I think is kind of what you're thinking, so that is usually limited to just within the public right of way. For those A D A requirements.
No, I wasn't thinking A D A, I was thinking that it was so steep that maybe steps would be more prudent than just a bark chip going up a thirty percent grade or something like that. Just wondering if there's a standard.
We would look at that in the actual permitting process, I haven't specifically looked at all the grades and everything for that path, so. Yeah, we don't have that level of detail yet in terms of the path design, that could be a good question for the applicant later on as well, if they've gotten to that level of detail yet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda, you have another question? Nope, Commissioner Brad, you have another question?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. I'm sure staff is aware that that Fern Street is substandard at sixteen feet or less in width due to the ivy and blackberries growing on it. And I do know that city council has been approached by homeowners and as well as T TAC. Asking for some help with mitigating traffic on that street. Understanding that it's not the developer's responsibility, this is a question to city of Tigard. Why aren't we using the discretionary tax fund that was set up and administered by T TAC? To grade that shoulder and add a bark trail or gravel trail to address those homeowners concerns? Reading through the feedback from the community, that was one of the biggest.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Brett, this is not really, sorry to cut you off, but this is not relevant to this application, so can we have a discussion later?
Right, it just, it seems that this is the, this is my problem with the project and it seems to be the neighborhood's problem with the project, so I'm just. Asking, but to see if we can find the proper venue for that, thank you.
Thank you. Any more question, Commissioner K Seven, please go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, clarification question for one of you, Jeremy or Agnes. We talked about the rainwater collection kind of a thing. Are there standards for that, how it needs to be done, given the slope that everybody else has talked about and the application talks about? Are there certain standards that you will measure the developer against to make sure it is correct, or how does that work? I'm not familiar, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, this is Jeremy Tamargo again, yes, so the city of Tigard follows what's called clean water services standards. And so they have specific design requirements for your water quality, so treatment of stormwater, your detention or hydro modification, so. The quantity of water as well as conveyance from the development site and. Basically, just to give a very quick summary, the proposed development will have to meet the preexisting development conditions in terms of the quantity of runoff. So all of the stormwater from the new impervious areas will be collected, treated, detained, and then routed to the pipe system within Fern Street.
So are there ways to measure it, once the development is done? Are there ways to check and make sure it meets the, all the things you just mentioned, how is that done?
So the applicant has submitted a preliminary drainage report in which they provide the calculations in terms of the sizing of the. Stormwater facility as well as the orifice structures out of the facility. And so there are specific design storm targets in which they're comparing their preexisting versus their proposed release rates in terms of meeting the criteria.
I see, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, follow up question, Jeremy. So the approval condition number twenty, it says that prior to commencement, in commencement any sidewalk, the applicant must submit a final grading plan showing the existing and proposed contour. The plan must detail the provision for surface drainage of all lots and show that they will be graded. To ensure that surface drainage is directed to the street or the public storm drainage system approved by the engineering division. So it goes on, said that there may be special grading inspection or permit. It may be required, so do you think there will be, the applicant will be, likely will need to submit a special grading. Permit or subject to inspection, or is it too early to tell at this point?
Yeah, it's too early to tell, I would say, I mean, that level of detail is typically done at the permitting. Level, but for, just in general, if you have steep slopes on a site, obviously both the city inspector, as well as we have a dedicated erosion control inspector from clean water services will be very aware of the site and, you know. Making sure that all appropriate measures are implemented during the construction phase.
And those drainage plans, there will be public information, right, so nervous neighbors want to get a copy, they can get it from you.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, yeah, just basically on the public comment we see so far, I can tell the neighbors to the west are understandably very nervous. So I'm just trying, any insurance we can provide them, it'll be appreciated, so.
Yeah, so both the plans as well as the drainage report, the final storm report that the applicant submits will be publicly available, certainly.
Okay, thank you. And one question, so Agnes, if you don't know the answer, maybe the applicant can answer this. So as far as you know, I just want to confirm what Commissioner Miranda said, the neighbor, the neighbor lot, the tax lot number seventeen hundred, so there's no plan as far as you know to develop at this point? Where the trail, okay.
I have not received any. I don't, I don't recall having a preapplication or any other kind of phone calls that we've received regarding this. This property, yeah.
And the staff report must say that because it's such a steep slope, there's no future connection plan for that area, at least for the, for a road. But is there a connection plan already in place for trail, as far as you know? For future connection?
I'm not sure, I know that we just recently also went through a public master plan update, so I'm not familiar whether there is, maybe, maybe Tom knows. But I can, I can check or look into that.
Because, because the future trail connection is connected to lot seventeen hundred at two very specific points. I'm just wondering how those two specific point at the lot line was, are picked. So can, I'm just curious why those, the future connection at that, those two points.
So.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I jumped in last time and I always forget to introduce myself for the audience that doesn't know me, I'm Tom McGuire and the assistant community development director for the city of Tigard. So to answer your question, this is, there's two parts to this. I, that portion of the park system plan that would get down to that fine grain level of, you know, determining trail locations and that hasn't been done yet. That's, that's another phase that's coming up, so I'm not aware of a specific connection that's been planned through here, but as you know. From previous projects, we look for trail connections everywhere we can find them locally with these small projects to support our strategic plan goal of. Increasing connectivity and in this particular case, in discussions with the applicant, they were looking for ways to provide public benefit and that's something that they offered, so. I would ask the applicant specifically why they chose those particular locations at the edge of the property, probably has something to do with the topo and how their. Their trail design fits in and if the neighboring property or when the neighboring property comes in for development someday, we would look at working with that. Applicant to connect those trails. And these would not be, you know, your high level multi-use bike pad type of path, but it still provides a level of connectivity and walkability within these neighborhoods.
Yeah, I can ask the applicant more, but right now, the connection to the east is going to a private driveway, so. I'm just, I'm just concerned that we might be, the path might be encouraging people to trespass on the neighbors in the future, but. I will ask the applicant those questions.
I believe we have the applicants put up signs for things that's the same as we do with sidewalk, public sidewalks that end. On private property or public streets that end at a private property that are dead end, and we put up signs that say basically it's private property, it may extend someday, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, commissioners, do we have any question for staff at this point? As I said, we'll come back later if you have more question. Okay, I see none, so thank you for now, Agnes.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I would like to ask the applicant to present your case. Please state your name and title and please limit your presentation to twenty minutes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt Newman, N W Engineers. With me. Are, is my business partner, Steve White, he's a P E for N W Engineers. Brad Wilcox, P E and the G E for Carlson Geotech, due to technical, he's also on the line. They're available for questions, but we just wanted to have them available in case a question comes up. I would like to, first of all. For Agnes, if you could share the PowerPoint for me. And then also one more thing for Agnes, you mentioned several comment letters. All I received was little. And then two emails today, one from Shelley Chase. And the other from. Janice, I didn't, you mentioned several others and I, I don't have, I haven't seen them, I don't believe I have seen them. But, so I just wanted to mention that. If there were others that came in today, I did not see them.
Yes, there were that, some like, two, I think, additional ones that came in later and I'll, I will go ahead and forward those two, I apologize, I thought. I had emailed those two as well and I will do that right now. And then I'll share my screen so I can bring up your presentation.
All right, so, yeah, we would like to thank staff and the neighbors for the input that they provided. We did, we talked a lot about the plan tonight, but the plan that you're seeing is actually. Revised pretty significantly from what we proposed a year ago when we first started this. And as a result of the neighborhood meeting we had and as a result of discussions with staff. We reduced density from ten to nine lots, we reduced the. The impact, the area of impact for this tract. Now there's, now that the track is actually forty thousand square feet, okay, can you go to the next sheet, please?
Just one second, my computer's frozen.
Okay, okay, yeah, so we reduced, so we increased track C in area. And so the, the most significant change, what, okay, here we are, most significant change is we had. A right where this pathway we've been talking about is we had houses there and kind of climbing up the slope. And so this track C has gotten larger. It's forty thousand square feet here. And it's. More of the trees are being preserved, clearly there's a lot, there was a question from one of the planning commissioners about the trees. And maybe I should go right into that, can you go to the next, next sheet? Okay. Well, a different one shows the trees, but let's talk about this one first. So the, the changes that we proposed from when we first discussed this with staff and with the neighbors. Is those lots along the. Ascension, backing up to Ascension, one to five, we pushed the homes further away, so they're actually twenty feet from the boundary rather than fifteen was a previous proposal. The, another change that we made was the hammerhead, we switched it before the hammerhead was. Facing east and that was a big cut into the slope, so we. Flipped it and now it's fairly close to matching grade, there's a cut through there where the private street is, but it's only about five feet. And so the, the five homes there are fairly close to matching grade, there, there's still some cut, but they're, they're fairly close. Then, but the big change that we made was with the public benefits and I'll, I'll talk about them in a minute, but. But I do want to address some of the comments first, can you go to the next slide, please, Agnes? Lot areas, this shows the. Not only the lot size, lot dimensions, all the. Points that Agnes was mentioning, but also shows that, that line we're showing where it's twenty five percent and greater, so. One through five are largely on the lower part of this slope, that's, that's where we have to develop. It's really the only part of the site that's. Relatively level and then. Six through nine is, it's a, it's a cut, the cut is, is. Reduced from what we initially proposed. Also, you'll notice there down by Fern, the neighbor, the adjacent neighbor has offered a. Site distance easement. site distance easement. So we're showing that. And that was our concern is that there would be, it's just a narrow road and, and by creating that site distance, removing some of those trees and the, and the brush in the right of way and on the neighbor's property would make it a lot safer. Next slide, please. All right, this shows the trees. So the, the arborist, in the arborist report that was submitted, the arborist recommended removing all of the trees on the, or literally all the trees on the west side of the site there. So all those dots you see, so I know that was a, there was a question about why one plan we're showing and one plan we're not. So what, in, in discussing this with Mr. Willers and with the arborist, we, even though his report is, is proposing to remove these, he said it would be acceptable to, to continue showing them as a possibility of retaining them. And we have in, in his, in his one of his exhibits in his arborist report, he has identified a number of trees, most of them are firs, that in the back of these lots, one through five, where he is recommending they be, be removed, but he is willing to reassess them after this is cleared out to see if he, if they can be retained. The concern he has, as we see all over when we read, when we develop properties is if you leave a few especially tall firs, they're in danger of, of a blowdown. And so that was, that's his, that's his concern. The smaller ones are perhaps safer. All of these trees are classified as a number two, which I understand is moderate safety, meaning it's, it's a moderate health. And so they're not in, they're not in decline, but there's some question whether they're as healthy as, as a, as a tree standing alone because they were part of this grove. So that's the concern. We, you know, we're, what we're proposing is retaining them if we can. This will be up to the arborist. And those that he recommends removal, regardless, we're replanting a whole buffer along there in the back ten feet of that, of all those lots. We're recommending, he said, five to six foot fir trees, Douglas first. Now, another comment that came up was regarding the pathway. I can answer, as far as the circulation, future connections to the south and east, I don't know if it's, if it's feasible they will ever connect. However, the, and I don't have the tax on number in front of me here, but the but the property to the south has the ability to redevelop. There's, it's deep, but they have a fairly level area around their house or certainly leveler, more level than this steep slope where they could redevelop. With acts, there's questions whether they can access off of the cul-de-sac there, which is southwest Loxus Terrace. I do remember looking at this several years ago, this very issue, and there was a question of whether there's legal access for more than one house. So it, whether this pathway would ever connect through to that cul-de-sac is, is more of a legal question. Whether there's proper easements could be obtained, but it is by us stubbing it there, it at least provides the ability in the future, if ever redevelops. One thing I will note is that we were just looking at somewhere along the, the south property that wasn't specific, but Craig did mention that it's real steep through here. So I would recommend a, a, turning it back and then, and then coming up through here. So it's not quite as, you're not climbing quite as steep, like a switchback. Over here, it, it pretty much follows the topo. And I think that's a reasonable location. This, of course, provides a, if ever this redevelops to the, to the south, it provides a, a north-south connection that would otherwise not be provided. Connecting here is an east-west to go through if ever it redevelops. It's possible that the planning commission may say just connect one of the two. But either way, what we wanted to do is provide the opportunity for some future date. Next slide, please. All right. So we have some, we've talked about some public benefits and I want to get more in detail on that. The, the public benefit, what we're calling public benefit number one is, is widening the road is, is really as much as we can. This is, this curb is about a hundred and fifty feet. And, and we've had this, this, the surveyor topo of this area, or at least some of this area here. And what happens is it's, it's relatively level down here, but as you further east you go, it, it's very steep and it's but here's this, this, if you can see this line through here, this is the edge of pavement. So you, you have basically a one-to-one slope coming down here or even steeper in places. So we're, we're proposing the sidewalk really as far as we can go, based on the topo we have at curp tight. And then we're extending the, the curb pretty much as far as we can go as well. There's a hydrant, fire hydrant up here. So that's our, our goal is to, to be able to widen the road to as far as we can with the, the curb line to the property line in this area is about ten feet. So from the, from the curb to the property line, even though it's a steep slope, is ten feet. And so what that allows this, as part of this improvement, it allows removal of some of this, more of this vegetation in the right of way as long as it's in a safe location to improve site distance even more. The sidewalk, like I said, is curp tight as far as we can go, whether we think is as safe as we can go. But what it does also is it just opens up this whole area for site distance, not only from the driveway here, but for people driving on Fern this direction, because they'll, it'll, it'll be definitely wider and more open road for them. That's public benefit number one. It's, as was mentioned earlier, if this were a straight subdivision, the improvement would be just this little area. Public benefit number two is the pathway. One question came up about steps. I believe that we will have to provide some steps in this first from the end of the street until we can catch grade up here. And then I believe it would be like a a, just a five-foot wide wood, four to five-foot wide wood chip path, pretty much falling grade. We're not proposing removing any trees. It'll, it'll meander around the trees. So this is conceptual, but it will, it will follow that. Once it's in place, we would have the surveyor follow the center line and then a easement would be drawn. Public pedestrian easement drawn following that, whether it comes this way, maybe it comes back. Okay, so, next slide, please. Yeah, and this is a slide you saw as well. So we wanted to provide a, a park available for the public. This is, you know, not just for the, the nine homeowners, but it would be available. It's a, it's a, it's got public easement over it. The back part, or I should say the west side would be natural. Just like the west side of the, behind the Hammerhead would be natural. We would keep the, as many trees, if any, as we can, based on the recommendations the arborist. But regardless, it would be replanted and for screening, we'll, we'll have a, a wood fence. I would like to address a couple of the other comments. Regarding the stormwater, we can go back, can we go back to the overall site plan, Agnes? Do the color one, it's fine. Yeah. So as far as stormwater, the, yeah, we did prepare a preliminary storm report based on Clean Water Services RNO nineteen oh five. What that is, is it requires hydromodeling and which, which, which means the pre-development stormwater coming off that site needs to be detained with development. And so this storm report shows that we've got a detention pond at the bottom. It not only does provide, it provides water quality treatment, but it also provides detention. There's a, a water quality manhole and there's also a structure in there which limits the release of the water at a pre-development rate. There was a concern, one of the comments was regarding stormwater coming off the site and flowing into the backyards of this property was on Ascension. That may or may not be occurring now, but one possibility and, and we'll, you know, we'll refer to what the Geotech recommends, but one possibility would be to provide a, behind the, the homes of three, four and five, provide a trench drain. So any, if there's any groundwater, I mean, all the, the roof drains, the road, all of that is getting picked up already. But any, if there's any groundwater, they didn't identify, they didn't find any, but if there'd be any groundwater, it could pick that water up and, and take it to the stormwater facility. Well, let's see, I have a little bit more time. If Wade would like to speak about the houses or any other comments.
Thank you, Matt. I think you covered all the pertinent points that we're trying to deliver to add value to the neighborhood and, and the public. I suppose hearing some comments back, maybe we will be able to get more details based on what the concerns might be.
All right, with that, we'll, we, we do want to keep our, you know, we would like a decision today, but if, but we do want to reserve the right to provide additional information or, or a continued hearing if necessary.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, do we have, do you have any question for the applicant? Please raise your hand. Commissioner Brent, please go ahead.
Hello, Matt and your team. Thank you very much for taking your time to talk to us about this. Just one question, the visitor parking. I see, obviously at this point, there's no designs for the homes. It sounds like the, the private access street won't be wide enough for street parking. And I don't know what the city ordinance is around parking law on Fern and Ascension, et cetera. Is that something that's in, within the purview of your project or is that, is that something else?
Right, right. So we have actually six on-street parking spaces shown. Two of them are, are on the street itself and four of them are in little, we'll call them a little parking court. Those obviously will be managed by the association, but the, but the intent is that they're for guests. It is a twenty-foot, or I should say a twenty-six-foot wide road which allows parking on one side. We're showing them down by the water quality facility because that's the only place that's really available. So there's six available. Because we all know that, you know, parking's a big, a big thing when visitors come, you have to have a place for them to park. I doubt they can park on, on Fern.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Miranda, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I was wondering if you could comment on the decision to provide a play structure in the park? What your thoughts were on that? And then I had some questions about the backyards of the lots, the top lots and the retaining walls that they may require. And lot six, the one with the, the, how big a retaining wall that one would have for their driveway? Thank you.
Okay, so the, yeah, we, we, we're proposing a, a play structure. It's a, the assumption is that we were thinking is that it'd be for, for small kids. Obviously, larger kid, larger children would go to, to the nearby parks, but this would be close by. So that was our thinking. Just providing a, something for the community. You're right, as far as the, the walls, there's, it's a significant cut. And what we're intending is that these homes, they're, they're two store, they're two stories of living, but with an under, with a garage under on, on the particularly lot six, but I would, I would imagine six through nine would all be that way, particularly six, seven and eight. And so what that does is it allows you, you come in at the garage level and then you have a, at least a twelve-foot walk-up to the main level and then a third floor. And the garage, the back of the garage is, is the retaining wall, is one retaining wall. And then the, the back of the first floor, there's a small retaining wall there too. But there's also going to be retaining walls and, and particularly on lot six, we expect two tiers of retaining walls of at least seven feet.
And the backyard depth of?
It'll be, it will be limited. It will be limited because of the, because of the slope and I, I know a lot of home builders like a flat and a lot of homeowners like a flat backyard, but we just, we're not going to get there. We might have, be able to do patios. And, and then a straight into a two-to-one slope or, or at least a some type of slope, landscape slope, up to the retaining wall.
The reason I ask is if it's five feet or ten feet of backyard space, the outdoor space for those units would rely on the park or the open space in between and would provide, if there was any idea of providing a communal area in track, the tract in between the two sets of houses on the lower side.
We haven't, we hadn't thought about that. I can, I'll let Wade respond.
Oh, it's not, it doesn't really need response. And the, there'll be three stories, the, all of the, all of the homes?
One through five, we don't need the garage under. So they, they're just the two, standard two stories, but the others will be again, two stories of living, but the garage by itself is cut into the slope and then the house is above it.
The reason I asked was some of the public comment was the concern that there would be three stories and that they, that third story would then look into the backyards of the homes on Fern. So I just wanted to.
I did, I did see that comment. My take on it and, because I did. My take on it and, because I did, I did kind of visualize the height. The, the front of those homes are still about 100, I don't recall the exact dimension, 150 feet or so to the back of the houses, back of the houses on Ascension. And one through five will largely block that. The, where the hammerhead is, it's open and you know, that's where we're hoping to save some trees there or certainly plant a screen. But I don't believe it'll be as noticeable as we think. One thing we do have, I, I forgot to mention to the commission is we do have a flyover plan that Wade had commissioned, which we can show too. And that kind of gives an idea of how it looks in three dimensions. We can show that as well.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. My questions are over.
Thank you. Commissioner Dick, please go ahead.
Thank you, President. I have a question. When you talked about the retaining walls and Clean Water Services is probably responsible for the drainage in that area or the specifications for that drainage? How much drainage is each lot going to have when they have a retaining wall that drops? Is it in the plan?
I'd like to defer that to, to my business partner, Steve White, and he can respond. I mean, there's certainly amount of, amount of stormwater for, that Clean Water Services assumes, but maybe he can, Steve, are you on, you can comment?
Yeah, I'm here. Steve White, caller of NW Engineers.
You've got an echo, Steve.
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Well, as far as the retaining walls go, there'll be gravel behind those walls to release the hydrostatic, the water pressure that would normally build up behind a retaining wall. And that will filter down to a perforated pipe and that perforated pipe will connect to the storm system. And then, yeah, and that's, it's kind of more of a geotech thing, depending on the type of wall, could be structural and geotech working together with us supervising. And then the lots themselves, we use the standard number that Clean Water requires us to use, which is 2,640 square feet per lot is how we calculate what we call the impervious area, where, where the water won't go into the ground. You know, it's, it's going to go on the roof or the pavement and so we're required to, to treat that water. And as Matt mentioned before, also due detention, so it doesn't release at any higher rate than the pre-developed rate for the site. So is that, is that answering your, your question more or less?
Pretty much so. Just to know that there's perforated drain tile and it's going to flow to the street, to the storm drain, that, that is a really important thing because I know many homes prior that have been built did not have this in there. So that's a really nice feature. Thank you.
Yeah. And just, I'll mention one other quick thing that Matt mentioned, which I think can be important too, is if the lots to the, to the west, if there's some kind of runoff issue, a trench drain is usually a good solution to keeping water from running off onto neighbors' property. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, it's nice to hear about the French drain possibility. So Matt, I just want to confirm what you said about the tree on track E. So, so your arborists say that they should be taken down, but, but you said that you will wait and see after the lot is clear to see if it's, it's feasible to, to, to keep them or remove them as recommended.
Correct. That's what he, that's what he recommended too. And I, I, I did forget to show this one exhibit, if we can still do that.
Sure. Go ahead.
Agnes has the, the flyover that was prepared. The, the designer had used some creative license. They're showing more trees being removed than were, is actually the case. And they also, they're on lots seven and eight are shown as skinny houses, which isn't true. But other than that, it's a, it's a pretty cool flyover that they did, that they prepared. And it's showing big walls in the back. I, I think really what this is, what we're going to end up with is it's a tiered system. They are still showing those trees behind the, the houses, one through five, which, like I said, maybe, may or may not be able to retain all of those, but we'll definitely And this doesn't show the sidewalk on the east side. That was a requirement that staff asked later. My preference is, is we wouldn't have it on the east side because what it does is it shoves the houses further into the slope, but I understand that staff is requiring it. And again, this area that we're looking at now, that would be all trees. We're not going to show any tree removal in that area. So there, there it is. Thank you.
Oh, that's very, very good. And so just confirm that now the trees on track C will be removed, right? It's not the same approach as track E?
Track C will not be removed.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. And so regarding the, the trails on track C, is it true that you said that you, you will be looking to adding steps because there's the grading or?
I think the, I think the, there's going to be steps required at the very, thereby, between five and six. And then until we catch grade, because there's a cut through there. So once we catch grade, you know, we'll try to just follow contours up to this little sitting area. And then the trail to the east is, is kind of following the contours. Obviously it's going to be a, a trail with some grade. The trail to the south, maybe we need to switch back there. But I don't think we need any steps in there.
Okay. So basically from the, from the house to the, to the lookout, the looking?
Might be some steps in that area.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So in terms of trail beyond those two, that point to the east and south, if you add trail there, would there be, would there be negative impact on internal cor, erosions or would it make erosion worse or you think?
I don't believe so because it's going to be wood chips.
Okay.
I do, I do a lot of hiking myself on the Pacificus Trail and the trail maintenance people have a, a way to divert the water so it, it goes into the, to the, to the ground. I think we would at least look to do that.
Okay. And just want to, one more confirm, confirmation is, so based on what you're saying, you really don't know where the future trail will be. You just pick those two trail, two connection point at the, at the lot line, just, just because.
East and south.
Okay. Just random point. Okay.
East is, east is probably fairly accurate because it follows the contours. South, like I said, maybe it, maybe it switch backs a ways and then ties in further east than we're showing it.
Is it possible to make it more of a loop so the trail actually connect with each other? Because at this point, we're, it could be cut off like that for 50, 100 years. You'll be a trail leading to nowhere other than for, for you to take your dog to the bathroom. So.
Of course, of course. That's actually a great idea. We did want to keep it away from the, especially the neighbors on Ascension. We didn't want it to go too close. We didn't want to create kind of a, a negative impact just having, I mean, it's, it is public. Obviously it's going to have to be maintained by the, by the proper owners, but also monitored, you know, by them as well.
All right. Oh, thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you. Commissioner K. Seven, you have a question?
Yeah. Quick one, quick clarification question, actually. That flyover was very nice. Thank you, Matt and your team for doing that. That was very good. That was very helpful too. In the flyover though, both sides, they show three-story buildings, but that's not what's being planned, right? You said on the west side, it will be two-story with the garage at the same street level. But on the, on the east side is where you're going to have the garage downstairs in the basement kind of a thing and then the two-story house on, on top, right?
I, I, that's my understanding. I'd like Wade respond to that question.
Because the flyover showed both sides were three-story.
Yeah, it did. It did.
Yeah. So you know, it's really hard to do the conceptual animation, you know, it's, it's a very difficult process. So we try and get a, a rendering that best represents as, as best as they can. You know, like, like Matt has stated before, the, the uphill lots of the six through nine, the big cut will be in for the garage. And then you'll take your stair step, your foundation up, you'll have your main level. And that main level is going to be about probably the middle of the downhill west side lots and then your second story atop. So it's not going to like have a looming effect over where you can just see right across, you know? It's going to be more like, you know, if these are here and the uphill lots are here, right? So it's going to, mostly they're going to, you're not going to see much past those homes.
And they, and those, and those homes on the, the west side are?
Two-story.
Two-story. And, and, and they're narrower. The wider ones are on the east side as well.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, K. Seven.
Thank you. Commissioner, do we have any more questions for the applicant? I see none. So thank you, Matt. We'll be taking public testimony. I will get back to you after that. All right. So, so this time we'll go into the public testimony section of the hearing. Again, if you want to call in to provide your testimony, the number is 503-966-4101, So speaker will be timed and limited to three minutes. Your time will begin after you clearly state your name and address. And we appreciate if you also spell your name too. And if you would also state whether you are in favor, in opposition or neutral to the application, that would be very helpful too. So when you approach this three minutes, Doring will give you a warning and, and after that, please stay on the line and in case commissioners have questions for you. All right. So Kealan, good evening.
Good evening. We have one caller at this time.
All right. So hello caller, please, please, you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is John Skidmore. I am at 12992 Southwest Ascension Drive. I'm a resident of Tigard since 1977 and a resident of 12992 Southwest Ascension since 2007. I appreciate the presentation today, but unfortunately I think it, the presentation was informative, but it, it leaves me with more questions than answers. And with only three minutes, I want to put a placeholder on the Geotech report, which is I am the last property on Ascension. You know, there's six properties, I'm the last guy. I'm concerned about the Geotech report identifying no hydro issues when there is between property one and property two, a perpetual water coming out of what appears to be somebody's downspout lateral. It, it, it runs 365 days a year and during the heat dome this year, it was running. So there is definitely an issue on the lower part of that property. That's not my huge concern because I am more concerned about being lot seven in the, the set aside area. I have quite a few wild ungulate trails in my backyard and I'm concerned the plant set does not identify how tall the perimeter fence is going to be and whether or not there is an, whether or not there is a, a migration, if it's going to impede migration for wild ungulates, namely black-tailed deer. We have them going up and down that property all the time. And I know you have a, a trail that's going to stop at a fence and then you have ungulate migration and I, I, that issue needs to be addressed because I absolutely don't want people on a short fence, jumping that fence and coming into my backyard. But I definitely want to provide the opportunity for black-tailed to continue the migration that I have witnessed in my 16 years on this property. That's a concern of mine. I'm also concerned about the number of trees being removed. It is unclear in the plant sets and the set aside area, how many trees are going to be retained or are not retained. I see a bunch of red Xs on what appears to be the larger DBH trees. Now, it was mentioned in the presentation today that there are, we call this in the industry I'm in, wind firm. You know, trees that grow up in a bunch, when, when they are thinned out, they are not wind firm. And, and yes, that's a vulnerability and I think that needs to be a consideration. But I would hate to see the larger trees in the set aside be identified for removal, especially when it appears to me, the ones I see visually are the ones with the largest DBH, which, which is optimal volume for lumber. So I want to make sure that we're considering all the aspects here. We need to have a balance. I am absolutely for private land ownership. I don't want to, you know, everybody has a right to develop, but we need to be balancing those things. I am, my main concern is how, how tall is the fence in the far perimeter and how are we going to allow for wild ungulate migration? And folks that come to, as, as been mentioned today, there, there's a trail that stops at a fence and what do you do there? I mean, I think the, the idea of a loop is a much better idea than having some, some people come to a fence where it stops and then they need to make a decision, do I go over the fence? And how tall that fence is vis a vis humans and wild ungulates? I think I should, I'll probably stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Before you, before you go, are you, so are you in, in opposition or in favor or neutral to the application?
I'm going to say neutral because I don't think there's enough information. I went through the whole plant set. Look, my job, my job is habitat restoration. I run $120 million program, a habitat restoration for the federal government. I'm pretty familiar with plant sets and these plant sets are not descriptive enough to tell me what's being removed, what's being retained and how you're dealing with things like wildlife migration. And so I have to stay neutral, but I'm leaning towards against because it, again, I don't, obviously development needs to happen. We have a shortage of housing, but these, the presentation today and the current plant sets are not descriptive enough to me, for me to be able to make a determination and final. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any, do you have any questions for John? I see none. So thank you again, John, for calling in. Kealan, do we have any more callers? Uh Kealan, do you have any more callers?
There are no more callers at this time.
Oh, okay. Alright, so. Agnes or or Matt, would you like to respond to the caller? About the property, I guess she's worried about property one and two constant water flowing and how tall the fences and how many tree will be removed?
Uh, right, um. I believe we have uh uh Mr. Wilcox is available now um to uh Brad Wilcox. He's uh geotech engineer. I believe he's available now.
Yeah, can you hear me okay, uh Matt?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Uh this, my name's Brad Wilcox, a geotechnical engineer with Carlson Geotechnical in Tigard. Eight four three zero Southwest Hunziker Street, Tigard. With regards to groundwater, um Carlson, so we produced the reports, performed soil sampling by advancing test pits and hand auger boring. Uh outside of one test pit, which was at the very bottom of the site, uh we did not encounter any groundwater seeps or the groundwater level. Uh we had also reviewed Oregon water well logs that are cataloged on the Oregon Water Resource Department website. Try to get a feel for where the regional groundwater table is. Um and that that was included in the Geotech report. Uh the regional groundwater level on the site is anticipated to be dozens of feet of low grade. Uh not a particular concern for the site. Uh with that said, there there could be um localized uh seeps coming down the hillside. And so as part of our work to assist the applicant in the finalization of plans, uh we can take a look at their grading plans and um potentially and or meet at the site. If we do see concentrated water flow, uh do a further investigation and identify if there's any uh remediation uh that needs to occur. But that's that's basically kind of our role here. And then to assist the civil engineer with the final grading and stormwater plans uh for the project, so hopefully answer that question.
Uh, okay, one one second. Uh Kealan, do you do you have something you want to say?
I just wanna let you know, we had one caller that called in just after we last talked, so it's up to you if you want to allow more testimony.
Uh, yeah, Matt, do you mind if we have one more caller? Okay. Alright, Kealan, so please patch in the caller. Hello, caller. Are you you are providing public testimony? Would you please say your name and address?
Yes, this is Joan Little and my husband Edward Little. We're at one two eight seven eight Southwest Ascension. Hello?
Hello, yeah, hi. Joan and Edward, uh we we received your written um public testimony earlier last week, but um please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Um, do you need my name and address again, or?
No, we we have it. Thank you.
So um my statement says a lot of what I um. Okay, sorry, I we have a delay on the um line here, so we're getting confusing me a little bit. So when we bought our house uh in twenty nineteen, the uh we knew it was it was for sale behind us, but it says zone for our seven. And the sign says, you know, five or six houses. And um we're we've gone from from ten in their presentation a year ago to nine now. And um I'm also uh concerned about the number of trees. We have significant groundwater intrusion in our crawl space as it is. And I can't, there are no, uh there's nothing in the plan about having trench drains along the west fence line. And we have deer jumping um over the fence already at the five-foot fence. But they, there are many deer that uh come through this area. And uh the I I I don't really buy the idea that those three-story houses across the street are not gonna uh be looking in my window, but.
But I would also like to say that with this, these two paths to nowhere, as you guys mentioned earlier, there's the fifty to a hundred years that we're also including. Uh even if we do um a loop there, uh they have to access it from a private road uh that is already uh difficult to see uh if you're not coming down Fern or Ascension. There's also the question of the trees. This seems to give them an easy out, well, we're going to depend upon the arborist. So if they choose, they can just chop down the trees. So there's no information with that. And the flyby was very nice, but it's already seen kind of cramped, very modern, which is not the style of the neighborhood. And also that there is uh the double-sided trees were on both sides of the fence, it looked like.
There were no houses in the flyby on Ascension, and the trees looked generous in the uh based on the plan uh that I have looked at and flyby.
So once we are okay, we we understand also.
We knew it was. But how it's being developed is our concern. So right now, we are not in favor. And um the the additional traffic along Ascension and the hundred fifty feet of road improvement, that's not going to make a difference for the rest of the road.
And that's all we have to say with that. Thank you for listening to us. We appreciate the council, and we appreciate for some of the great questions that were asked earlier. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joan and Edward. Before you go, Commissioner, do we have any questions for the callers? I see none, so again, thank you so much, uh Joan and Edward for calling. Kealan, do you have any more caller?
No more callers at this time.
Okay, great. Alright, Matt, let's go back to uh caller number one. I I believe we were on the parameter fence.
Right. Right, and and understand that um, you know, as a consultant, you know, my uh my response often is let's provide a six-foot fence because people want screening and buffering. I didn't really take into account that deer would be jumping it. I would recommend, and I'm sure that Wade will go along with this, that we uh you know, we discussed this with with John Skidmore and and get the recommendations of, for as far as fencing anyway, uh his recommendations and those of the of the neighbors. It's just, you know, like I said, often property owners want a six-foot wood fence because that's just, you know, that's real common. But if that provides some deterrence for the deer or to to cross through, um we, by the way, we only proposed it the back of lots one through uh through five, not up as up the hill. But um I'm sure there's flexibility there to to you know, with to work with the neighbors as to what they what they think is appropriate for fencing, uh screening and buffering. Also, the uh um that the the talk from from both uh the from him and the Littles about about water, I I would recommend that you know, that we just visit their visit their property and and see, and and this might be something that um that Brad Wilcox, um his firm does, and just to just to investigate where that water's coming from. Because this development's not causing it, it's it's there already. There may be maybe something that can be that can be addressed through this development, picking that up. And uh and and um I mean, clearly, those homes were cut into the slope a little bit. And so that might, who knows? Uh it is something that the um I'm sure Brad's um team can can investigate. As far as the uh the loop, the talking about the the loop, I'm sure we're we we'd be happy to do the loop instead of uh instead of stubbing it to one or both locations. But that's um uh that we just felt that we should do that to to provide the opportunity for some day in the future. But we're open to to that as well. As far as the uh the 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 discussion about the road, all I can say is we're we're providing, I believe, what what we can, um that's feasible, that's without shaving that whole hillside down, which would definitely require uh retaining walls and even easements on the neighbor's property. Um I think we're providing pretty much all we can, and it will it will be an improvement to what's there. Plus, we can remove some um trees or vegetation east of where the curb ends on Fern to open up at least for site distance. We already meet the site distance with the plan we are proposing, two hundred and fifty feet, but this will improve it. And and the last uh comments about the trees, I guess what I would say there is the yeah, we're we are deferring to the arborist, but that's for a safety reason. I mean, my my preference um as a planner is to um when we develop is to save trees where we can. Especially some of the big deciduous, if there there is in the in there is a a large uh Oregon or a a maple tree, big-leaf maple back there. And there are and there are behind lot five, there are several deciduous trees. They may, they may be um retained because they're less likely to blow down, uh but a big tall fir, I don't know. That's, I would like to defer that to the arborist to get their recommendations. If if John uh Skidmore is an expert in this, um we'd like his input as well. But we're just showing what we're showing retaining what we can. There was some confusion, um or I thought I heard, about removing trees in the in the track C. And our plan is not, so as far as our plan sho-shows, the dark trees on our plan are we're proposing to save, and the light trees are being proposed to remove. So the only area where we're where we're not totally clear is what we just talked about on the west side of one through five, where we're showing them this possibly being saved, but the arborist is thinking they might have to be removed. But as far as in track A, in track C, we have no no intention to remove any of those, you know, unless there's some danger um that the arborist recommends. But far as we're concerned, they're um they will be retained.
Great.
And so that's uh that's all I have.
Okay. And the reason there's no plan like indicating French drains, that is because you you're gonna submit that later on, right? So.
And we and we weren't, we weren't, it wasn't brought to our attention that there was a a water concern on the an existing water concern. But um yeah, absolutely, through engineering, um we'll evaluate it, provide what uh the Geotech recommends.
Alright, thank you, Matt. Tom, do you have anything to add?
I wanted to um, I I also give Agnes a chance if she wants to, but uh the I think there's some staff response that we want to give to some of the testimony that's been received and some things we heard tonight. So um I will just kick in. First of all, the issue about the trail in the track C and whether it's a loop or not, I I don't think that's an issue. If they want to make it a loop, that's fine, but I I would ask that the public access easement be may be retained up to the property borders. So, you know, if you want to have a loop trail, it's not a trail that goes up to a dead end. I I understand that. But we do want to have that public access so that if something does develop and we can make that connection, that we still have the public access easement available to make that connection. And understand if we loop the trail, we're gonna, you know, that that development in the future, I don't know when it would be, would have to work out with the homeowners association, who's gonna pay for extending the trail and making those connections? So we're making it just a little bit tougher there, but I get how that balances with the issue of a trail that that dead ends at a at a person's property and having to sign that and maintain it. So I think, and then also, um there was one other issue about where those uh trails dead-ended, and that is we do have the block length standard. And so I think in those particular locations, I think they're at three hundred feet, which is underneath the block length standard. So with the trail locations ending where they're showing them on the south and the east, they're meeting the the block standard for connectivity. So there is, it isn't completely random. On the question of fences, fence heights, that's pretty much up to the applicant. That's not really part of what we're considering here. They can work that out with the neighbors. I'm fine with that. There's been deer have been mentioned. I, you know, this is where I have to be the the bad guy and say, you know, we don't really have any criteria that address um deer mitigation is just not an issue that is part of the review. If the applicant wants to work with the neighbors to maximize that or in, you know, uh support that, that would be fine, that they can work out with them. Uh same with the building height issues. I I've been hearing that, you know, there's no code limitation on two, three stories as long as they meet the overall height requirement. And they are, the applicant is not asking to vary the height requirement. So it's not even really a question that's on the table. As long as they meet the height requirement, they can design basically what buildings they want to design. And so again, I just have to be clear about those things. And then the trees, um my suggestion is for everybody, neighbors, applicant, commission, everybody to just consider that they're gonna take out all of those trees that they're asking for. And I often tell applicants, ask for, if you think you might save some trees, but you're not sure, ask for taking them out. So that essentially you get approval to take them all out. But then when an arborist or an expert has a chance to go out onto the site, as they're doing the site work, they can make an onsite evaluation as to whether some can stay or not. So and and you don't get yourself in trouble if you ask to take out a hundred trees and you only end up taking out seventy trees. And again, safety is the number one priority there. I'd also like to add, again, bringing it back to the approval criteria, the city of Tigard's tree regulations are based on canopy percentage, so that's why we don't have ready numbers of how many individual trees are coming out or um staying, because that's not how we look at it. That's not how we ask applicants to prepare their application. It's based on a either retaining or retaining and increasing to a specific canopy percentage. And they can do that through retaining or through planting. And then the issues of screening, um those do, uh I think, factor into the criteria a bit here. So that's something you should take into account if they can't. It turns out they can't keep any of the trees. Assume they can't keep any of the trees on the western property line, and then you need to consider whether the screening of trees and so forth, or the combination of trees and fence they're proposing is going to uh meet our standard there. So again, just trying to focus a couple of the issues that got a little out there back toward the criteria. I think that's everything. And Agnes or Jeremy, did you want to chime in on anything? Oh, one other thing I want to say is uh the tree report, the Geotech. Remember, at this stage, we're 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 still at a, you know, this isn't way up in the stratosphere, but this is still a pretty high look at things. A lot of the Geotech stuff, you don't know what you have until they start opening up the ground. That's why they have a Geotech working with them on site. That's why we have inspectors and people in the field uh to see what's going on when you start peeling the earth away, see what is actually going on in there. And also to see kind of what, where the grading ends up, um how that leaves these trees. This is, you know, this is a nice forest, but it is a forest. So as has been mentioned, when you start cutting those trees down, you uh it leaves the interior trees much more exposed and much more dangerous situation. So again, I would caution that I would assume most of the trees are gonna come out in the in the graded and developed areas. Um and they will save some if it makes sense.
Um, Tom, so in terms of in terms of drain drainage, I'll approve of. our approval criteria number 20 did say, as I asked Jeremy, have to provide plans prior to construction. So in certain situations, they might require inspection. So does that mean that now all situation requires subsequent inspection to make sure the grading was done correctly? Or only certain situation? Or every situation after they submit a plan, there will be an inspection to make sure that other gradings are done correctly?
Yes. There's... Well, I would let Jeremy respond to that in detail. But yes, there's definitely inspections where we check to make sure, especially on a steep slope like this, and a very steep slope, and to check what some of these groundwater issues may or may not be happening. And kind of see... Again, you want to get out there to see what's going on under the ground once you start peeling it away. So... But I will let Jeremy speak to that.
Yeah, so as we've touched on a bit previously, there's after the land use decision, right, there's the whole engineering permitting process, right? And so the plans that are submitted at land use are generally kind of like 30% plans, whereas we're looking at full construction documents. So you'd have all those details and review of, as we talked about, like a French drain system along the west side. So those details would be reviewed at that time. In terms of the erosion control inspections, there'll again be our city inspector as well as the CWS inspector that'll be onsite and doing regular inspections. So both that occurs during the public improvement construction phase as well as the condition that you're referring to, really then is the additional permitting for the individual lots themselves. And so if you have an individual lot exceeding that 20% slope there, it basically gets flagged that there's additional inspection required when the actual lot is constructed to make sure that those inspections are being processed at the time of the lot construction as well. So all of that, that's the intent of the condition there. But as Tom mentioned, that certainly gets flagged when you see these steep slopes on the individual lots.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, I would add that, again, there's a little bit of a balance. You know, as I said, to do the really detailed investigations, especially Geotech, it's very expensive. Also, you know, before you get out there, you don't want the neighbors... Also, generally don't like, you know, a bulldozer or a backhoe going up there and tearing into the hillside to try to figure out what's going on underneath the surface. So... And it's expensive. So we try to get a level of detail into a Geotech report at this phase to where we can pretty much be assured that there's no fatal flaws. And, you know, once you get past that, okay, there's nothing really terrible, it looks like, going on out here. It's all likely doable. And so then, as we move forward into the next phase and we get deeper, more involved investigations and we start tearing into the site, that's why you want people on hand to continually review that and make sure that everything's moving forward as predicted.
Okay.
And also, I should say, sorry, Jeremy, but words in your mouth. But they also have the inspectors are available if their number, their email, whatever, could be made available. So as construction is going on out there, if neighbors or anyone happens to be around sees something that they have a concern about, they can always contact us and ask about it.
That is correct. You could either contact me or we have the construction in Tigard webpage on our website there that provides up-to-date information for in terms of contact information for each of the projects that are currently going on in the city. So lots of ways to get ahold of us.
Thank you. And one more question about track C, Tom. So what are you saying that it's okay to make them make a loop? But as long as we require them to have those easement for future connections, they would have to make the connection if the neighbor lot is ever developed? You said...
Yes. We want to preserve the ability to make those connections if it becomes available someday.
Okay. Well, I may ask you about the technical language again, if the planning commission want to do that or go that way. So... All right, commissioners, this is your last chance to ask applicants or staff any questions. Commissioner Miranda, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I have a question actually about the sidewalks and the applicant's comment about sidewalks on both sides of the street. And was wondering if I could have a little bit more background on that and if there was any wiggle room. And my reasoning in that is my concern about public space and the backyards of those particular units. There's not going to be a lot of traffic, of foot traffic. One side seems reasonable. So if I could get a little background on why there needs to be sidewalks on both sides of the street, that'd be much appreciated.
So that requirement comes from our city code. So we require sidewalks on both sides of the street. So without that sidewalk on the east side, there would be no ADA accessible connection between lots six, seven, eight, and nine, both to track C, but then ultimately back to Fern Street as well. So we... There would be no path... Basically, no ADA compliant path for those residents here to get to track C or back to Fern Street.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Dick.
Hi. I'm going to ask about the stormwater again. So what I'm hearing is you're cutting down almost all of the trees because removing a few would make the rest unstable. So that becomes a greater water issue. And I'm sure you have addressed that in your plans. But I just want to be sure that you're actually doing drain tile in there to alleviate that water for the people who live downhill from the new development.
I could let Matt and the applicant team speak to the specifics. But yes, there was a preliminary drainage report submitted by the applicant addressing drainage from all the impervious surfaces that'll be created by the site. And that's all hard piped through track A to the proposed facility, which is handling both water quality, the treatment piece, as well as detention, the quantity piece. So if Matt or his team wants to add more detail to that, but that is addressed in the storm report from the applicant.
The only thing I would say would be that the... In particular, like Steve mentioned, behind the walls. So any walls is going to be... And then all the hard surface, so that the roof drains, the sidewalks, the street. And so the only part that really we're not talking about is the backyards, where those trees are either staying or getting removed. And that would be some kind of a tile system or a, you know, drain tile or a French drain system to intercept. We've designed those for like above septic systems. Washington County and Monmouth County require them to intercept groundwater often. And so it seems like a reasonable solution. But we'll defer to the Geotech when the time comes.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I really appreciate that.
Commissioner Watson, please go ahead.
Um, as an extension of what Commissioner Dick was just asking, or maybe I'm trying to elaborate. So I understand that you're providing appropriate drainage for the footings, for the retaining walls and the construction and the new impervious surfaces. But she sort of... She brought up the issue of the fact that you're going to be cutting down a lot of the trees. And so are you going to be landscaping in such a way to prevent erosion now that there's no longer trees to stabilize and absorb, you know, the water? Stabilize the soils and absorb the water?
So that's a... So there's a time that that is addressed is when we're actually physically doing the grading. We got to do what's called a 1200C plan, which is an erosion control plan. So after October 1st, any disturbed soil needs to be covered with hay or otherwise protected. That's the short term during construction and during the construction of the houses. By the end, yeah, it all has to be landscaped. And, you know, we're not there as far as a landscape plan. But I think with the houses, the backyards, we'd have a landscape plan for the backyards.
Okay. And a part of that design would be... Is the landscaping design would accommodate the reduction or prevention of erosion to the soils.
Right. And the... I can't remember if I mentioned this or not, but the back 10 feet of those one through five and track E and track D will... Even if we do have to take the trees out, the back 10 feet is going to be planted with native, not just firs, but native ground cover, like ferns and all that stuff. So it'll be... It will be, even though it'll be these people's yards, it'll be kind of off limits for a normal yard. It would be native plantings.
Sort of like an easement that a plant...
Like you do clean water services, vegetative corridors, stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any more questions before going to deliberation? All right. I guess everybody's satisfied at this point. So I'm going to close the public hearing section. And that's going to deliberations. So commissioners, what do you think? So the applicant is seeking adjustments to the development plan in exchange for providing public benefits. What do you think of the application? Commissioner Dick.
I'm a little concerned about the wildlife. That is not a concern in the city overview. And the removal of the trees in that area and the water issue. But they seem to have that under control as far as the water issue. But where do you tell all of the animals to go? If you remove the trees, it's like a double-edged sword in that respect. And that's sad. I understand progress must go on, but that is a concern about the trees. I wish they would say when they take out the trees that would fail, that they would replant trees that could grow up to sustain the water issues and also give refuge to wildlife. That's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson.
So I've been kind of keeping a list going as we've been talking more, just looking at it from the perspective of, okay, what are the pros and cons of pursuing this development as presented versus what it would likely look like as a standard subdivision? Because that's really the decision we have to make. Not... We're not deciding, should there be development or not? That's not really our place to say. We're just saying, do we give them flexibility or not? And so for me, the main cons are really basically population density. Basically, there would be, depending on how you look at the numbers between one and three additional houses of people and also one to three additional households of people generating vehicle traffic. Those are the main cons from my perspective. On the other side, the pros are, even though the street improvements aren't going to cover the entirety of Fern Street, and having now driven on that personally, it's a little bit of an adventure just to drive down that street. And it's not going to fix that totally. But even 150 feet of widening and 100 feet of sidewalks is going to, I think, help quite a bit and pave the way for, hopefully, maybe some future improvements down the road, so to speak. And then the other big pro from my perspective is the trails and the public access added through the site. Some of these, I can definitely see people thinking are at best neutrals rather than outright positives. But to me, on balance, it seems like a fair benefit to make the sacrifice of those changes and setbacks in density.
Do you think the track... Do you care if it's a loop or a dead end? Would provide all public benefits?
Well, in doing my readings, I hadn't thought of the loop idea, to be honest. I'm not against the loop idea, but I guess for me personally, the amount of trail just within this development is not so significant that I feel like a loop is necessary. But I wouldn't be against it either.
Fair enough. Thank you. Commissioner Brent, your comment?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to echo Nathan's sentiment on Fern Street. I know that this Fern Street has been a known issue. And I understand that what Matt and his team are planning are very generous. And I think, as Commissioner Jackson said, that it's going to help with fixing some of that issue. My hesitation is kind of what I'm learning in PSU in grad school right now. They're saying planners have the outside's ability to change the environment and negatively impact those they do, whether they're following the rule and letter of the law or spirit of the law. So with that in mind, I'm supportive of what the developer is doing. Not so supportive of the nine units. I think maybe it's not the character of the neighborhood. And I'm not supportive of the city's lack of effort to fix or address some of the issues in Fern Street. I understand that those are two different issues. So my issue with the proposal is the density and then all other things I think they've done, addressing the parking, the public access, the sidewalks, and agreeing to fix more than their fair share, proportional share of the road. Our kudos to them. So I support them on that. That's... Yeah, that's it. That's what I have to say. So thank you, everybody who's presented, and thanks to the developers and etc.
Thank you. Commissioner Watson.
So I would like to echo what Commissioner Brent just said in regards to... So a general overall comment is that this is a very challenging site. And so, you know, I appreciate everybody... Tom's talking through, you know, the complexity and the amount of, you know, that there's still a lot of design that needs to occur. And that, yes, we're here to say, is this feasible? And, yeah, is there a greater good that's occurring, you know, for the public in exchange for the additional density? And, you know, the density itself, I don't see as causing a detriment. It's not detrimental. You know, it's not going to fix... It's not going to fix any sort of erosion or, you know, trees or groundwater issues, you know, whether or not they have nine houses or six houses, et cetera. So that said, you know, there's more design that's going to occur. There's more permitting. You know, there's going to be more opportunities for the neighbors to... So that said, um, you know, th- there's more design that's going to occur. There's more permitting, you know, there's going to be more opportunities for the neighbors to have input. Um in terms of the loop. The the loop idea, I actually was sort of silently thinking that to myself um earlier on in the in the um. In the presentation. Um and what I would say about that is um I I understand, I I can kind of, I can see why we we would want that connection. To I think it's the south. Um, you you know, that one seems like it, you know, it it. They're within a reasonable amount of time that that could sort of happen. Um, the one to the east was a little bit more like, yeah, I I can see why the neighbors would not like um a trail, you know, a trailhead. Kind of diving into their back fence. Um, sort of thing, if I'm if I'm remembering that correctly, um.
I think you might have mixed them, mixed them up.
Reverse them? Okay, sorry. Um, but the the one that there there was one that seemed like, yeah, it it was more, um, you know, like immediate, like it was more feasible. Um, and I'm kind of wondering, um, so like if I if I were walking my dog in the neighborhood, um. You know, on a particularly steep site like that, like if I couldn't see that the fact that the the trail just kind of dead ends. Um, I would probably be pretty annoyed, actually, if I, you know, climbed all the way up there and then found out, found out at the at the top that there was nowhere to go. Um, so and there's also, you know, there's also the concern, and I apologize for my rambling, but um. There's also the concern about the, you know, the deer migration, et cetera. And it seems like some of the, you know, some were wanting to incur, you know, help the deer in their migration and preserve that. Um, some some were not wanting the the deer to jump over their fence. Um, and uh I guess. In some ways, um, I'm kind of wondering, like, eh, the the benefit of the trail, if the trail is isn't going anywhere. Um, do you know, do we want to disturb the 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 natural? Um, you know, that that environment any more than we need to until there, until the trail actually goes somewhere? Um, and uh and kind of like on a and a big picture comment, it's like, um. It it seems like, uh, you know, in in certain circumstances, um. Where, you know, when the site's very difficult and you're actually, you know, wanting to preserve. Um, you know, trees and and um what what uh in, you know, um natural environment there is. Um, you know, do do we consider like writing the writing the um code and such, you know, development code in such a way that. Um, you know, you could do a trail. Or or you could um, you know, lessen the environmental impact on on the site and on. Um, the animals and and, you know, migrations and not that sort of thing, you know, sort of like how we treat. Water, you know, how we treat um wetlands, you know, um, just because it's not wet. Um, doesn't mean that, you know, um, we can't, we can't make the effort to help um preserve, preserve the ecosystem. Um, that's remaining there. Uh but anyway, I I'm again, I'm rambling, but um. Yeah, i- in my mind, like betrayal, I understand wanting to like have that easement for the ax, you know, to to create that trail at when it makes sense. But, you know, do we do we really need to install that at this point if it's just going to disturb? Disturb the soils and, you know, maybe help further erosion or compaction or or what have you, and, you know, is it really? Is it really helping? Um, so but if we need the trail. Um, you know, I personally, I would rather have a loop that might have like a little tail that pokes over to the one side that um. That uh, you know, where it's more more likely that that connection is going to be made at a, you know, in a at a later date. Um, rather than just kind of having it, you know, a trail that goes in two directions and kind of I it sort of implies a loop that doesn't exist. Um, so you know.
Yeah, it it's up to us whether you want the loop or not at this point. I think the staff is mostly concerned about preserving. The the right to make connection in the future. So I I'm 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 with you and Commissioner Jackson. It's like, in one hand, as Commissioner Jackson mentioned, it's so small, so a loop is. Almost not worth it. So but like you, I'm saying, I'm thinking maybe we should just get rid, not have the loop, not have a trail at all at this point. And just preserve, preserve the easement to if 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 there's a future connection, we will do the connection. So. Maybe the builder can build just up the step to the platform, but get and not build the two loop at this point. So maybe that's a possibility. All right. So thank you. Commissioner Miranda, do you have any comments?
Of course I do. Um, I definitely want to um. Applaud the public benefit of the widened street and additional. Uh sidewalks. Um in my site visit, I too was pretty shocked. Um, about um how much traffic was coming from the other subdivision down the way. Um, but I also noticed that um the houses on Ascension, many of them did not have back fences to this particular. Um, property and um I applaud the tone of the developer and his willingness to. Um, work with those neighbors. Um, um, that's lovely to see. Um, but this really comes down to what is a public benefit and obviously the street improvement. And the street widening is a public benefit for all. My concern really is about the public benefit for the subdivision um residents and um. I see the um access to the proposed trail as not a um. Public benefit to the greater community at this time because it's really steep and um. Not something that all people are going to choose to like go and investigate loop or not. Um. It's it's a little bit out of the way. Um, my concern is that there is not enough um space for. The subdivision residents, specifically those who are against the retaining wall. Their backyards. Um, are about as big as a dog run. Um, and so I would have rather have seen more of like a plaza type. Um, area for um for that um residential area. I understand the need for the and the desire for the trail public easements at this time, but I don't see. Um, having those trails as um a public benefit to the greater world at this time and that that is 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 those residents backyard. And, you know, let those people and children run around in that area and make their own trails at this time. So I am against um amending this request to um have a loop trail.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner Kinones, haven't heard from you all night.
Hi, yeah, um, I, you know, I was very, uh, my interest was piqued with the first caller's comments. Um, you know, you don't really, you don't really know what you don't know. And when he brought in his expertise about the vagueness of the one study, um. That, you know, I I didn't know it was vague, right? Like, looking at the material. So um, I didn't know. I think my comment goes to that of like, can we add? Um, an amendment or um a a contingency that like. When the time comes that they can come back to the planning commission with a more detailed proposal of that. Um, but that was kind of, that's pretty much my concern. I I'm like, I'm on the fence, like. Commissioner Miranda's comments, you know, I'm like kind of there with her, but I also see like. Everybody else's viewpoint, so um I'm I'm kind of neutral, but will probably vote for it, but I was wondering about that amendment option. Um, for that specific. Um, like I said, that specific item that the one caller called about.
Well, we do have a approval condition number twenty, as I mentioned, they have to submit uh draining plans and. They will be inspection on site, so um. So I don't know if eh what kind of condition Commissioner Kinones that you want to impose that. That would be on top of that already.
Yeah, because he was his, oh gosh, I wish I would have wrote it down. His was very specific to um. It was like the 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 geo, I'm I'm sorry, I'm really blanking right now, but it was it was very specific of what he talked about. So. That's I I mean, if it's if it's already covered, then then my point is mute, but what he said really struck me of how vague that one report was, so. Um, yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, as Tom mentioned, you know, a lot of thing. We cannot find out and they cannot be found out until they really actually start working and and digging to it, so. Uh I I just don't, but if you want to propose a a motion to amend something, I definitely want to entertain it, so. Uh Commissioner Shook.
See if I can turn my mic on this time. Um, I have I have just a little bit different take on this uh trail. Uh to me. Uh, the public benefit really is for the city of Tiger that is trying to jigsaw puzzle piece a trail system together. And the more pieces you take out of the the puzzle and say, we'll do it later, just adds a a cost. And and increases the improbability that that trail system would ever be built. So I know we don't know when it'll happen or if it'll happen. Um, but to have two spurs that go out to the property line, I think is a good idea. Um, it lets people at least wander out into the woods safely on a trail. And as far as erosion is concerned, I think that. Uh, these wood chip paths are proven to be um. A a quality thing that doesn't result in erosion. So again, I I like similar other projects that we've looked at. I like the idea of people being able to go out into the woods. With their little kids and not create their own trails, but but use a a trail system that. Could benefit the city someday by uh a continuous connection. So other than that, um, I really liked um Commissioner Jackson's summary. You know, I think it's a a a good project. It's a difficult project and it's um. Um, I'm in favor of it, so thank you.
Thank you. And I think Commissioner Roberts, would you like to say something?
Or I I'm, boy, I've been torn on this one. Um, I think it boils, for me, it boils down to what is the best use of this property? And it let me ramble for just a few seconds. Fifteen, twenty years ago. I looked at buying a house in this area, immediate area. Didn't buy it because the foundation needed vast rework, but I was impressed by the the forest feel. And I think that what we're about to do is going to be a shock to the system in a sense. Uh, in terms of, you know, the design, the density, so on and so forth. And and then I thought, well, okay, if I won the lottery, I just buy it and leave it as is for posterity. But then I thought. Who's gonna go there? It's too steep. It's it's the access is difficult. It's not something that's going to become like a public park forest type of thing. So that led me to say, well, what is the best use for this property? And as much as I I think it's a beautiful spot within this uh the 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 city of Tiger. I think this is probably the best thing to do, and I think they've done a great job of trying to make, you know. Make it work with all the improvements that they're suggesting. So started on the fence and now I'm on the side of saying yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner.
Hi, I think most everybody has uh uh said everything I wanted to say, so they took my words out of my mouth. So uh, yeah, I was I was also, this is a challenging project, and I think the good good news is um. Mark and his team have um done a good job so far, and I'm assuming they'll continue to do a good job and. Their willingness to work with the residents and do the go the extra mile to make sure everything is done. That makes me feel much better. Uh than when I first started walking into this one. Uh and like uh uh Nathan and others, I also, I also live very close to it. So I took a walk down there. I walked there all the time, so I did walk down there to take a look, et cetera. So I think the addressing some of the water things uh and other stuff would be good and I'm. I'm also in favor of the trail rather than letting people create their own trails. Uh, having a trail would be much better than letting people create. If you don't create a trail, somebody. Somebody or the other will create their own set of trails and that won't be good for the environment anyway, so I'm more in favor of creating a trail than uh leaving it just the way it is. Um, so with all of that, you know, I'm, you know. Given all the things that Tom said also and all the things Mark said about working with the residents and on Ascension and stuff. I think I feel much better about this project than um I did when I walked into the meeting.
Thank you. Do you do you care about if the trail is a loop or it dead ends there, Commissioner?
I actually liked what I actually liked what uh Commissioner Watson said, right? It's a loop, but in that area, you kind of leave it all, you know, in order to address what Tom was. Highlighting, right? If we if we just make it a regular loop, later on, the homeowners association and others will have to pay for. You know, make making a continuation, et cetera, but instead. Where we believe it'll it may continue if we can leave it as a stub, but at the same time create a loop, otherwise. Would be a good way to, you know, have our cake and eat it too, long term, sounds like. So that was a great suggestion by Commissioner Watson.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda and Commissioner Dick, do you have any further comments in addition to what you said?
Um, I do. I just wanted to know if we could add in there that if they're forced to cut down so many. Of the old growth trees that are in there, that if they could replace some of them just for the habitat. I think that would be great. I think their plan is great and um I think it will be really wonderful. They've gone above and beyond to. Um, work are going to be working more with the community there as they do that development, but my one request would be. Having to cut down so many trees, could they replace the trees that they are? Probably will be forced to cut down because of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I guess for me, I'm generally in support of the project. Um. I I'm generally in support of bringing more housing to the city, but um in this case, it looks like those will be bigger homes, so. I don't know if the it will benefit everybody because the the house, the the pricing range of the house, but. There will be more homes and they are within their right to build up to ten and in in exchange to uh in exchange for public benefit. I think the public benefit providers are generally um consistent with what they're asking for. Um, in terms of tracks C, um, I. I I I generally, if we're going to have a um pathway there, I would prefer it to be looped because. Uh, as Commissioner Watson mentioned, um, if I were hiking up there and see a dead end, I would be pretty frustrated. And the city has um. Last year, there are two cases where the city are building uh nature trail loops because. The city seemed to think that if people don't see a a trail, they will make their own rogue trail, which might make things worse. So even if we uh, you know, approve the plan as it is right now with two dead end. Um, and people, when people get to the dead end. I'm afraid they're going to make their own trail, uh rogue trail. Which will might make things worse, so it might be better to have a loop and with and as and with um dead end. Coming out of the loop at one or both ends, so um people will be less likely to create the um their rogue trail. But on the other hand, how many people are going to use it? I don't know. So um. So I'm okay with the application as as it is right now, but. If somebody wants to propose a amendment to make, to require this loop on track C to be looped with the with one or two dead end. Um, as it is now, I will I will support as well, so. I will I will support as well. So. Um any more comments? I see hands still raised by Commissioner Dick and Miranda.
I did. I did have a quick kind of um, what are those questions that you just kind of let hang there and don't really ask for an answer? This is a sensitive area, but it's not a wetland. When we've dealt with wetlands before, we've had dead end trails. And so. I don't know, just something to think about. The um.
Oh, I remember that one case. Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. I understand looping back. But it is also a sensitive land, so is making more trails disrupt the sensitivity of that land.
Well, the city's argument previously has been, people will make their own trail. So if if people are gonna make their own trail, it's better that we make a trail. So you will control traffic flow. So as Commissioner Watson mentioned, she'll be frustrated hiking all the way up there to a dead end. So she might 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 not decide, maybe, you know, she see another trail there. So she will make her own rogue trail to connect to the other end. So I I don't know. I I don't know the answer to that. So those arguments on both sides.
This is why I say it's not something that really is looking for an answer, just something to think about.
Yeah, I I I I'm I'm like that, you know, who knows what I'm gonna do, really, um in that situation. But um in in the other situation, um was it wasn't as steep as this. Like, um, you know, as speaking as a woman walking, you know, who who might be walking my dog, but otherwise alone. Um I I'm, you know, cutting through a very, very focused development like this. And then like sudden, you know, just gonna, I'm just gonna take off into the woods um at at this kind of slope um without having a sense of it going anywhere. Um that that kind of, you know, that's why I'm sort of like, you know, I have a trail at all until um there's somewhere to go. Um but or or, you know, if we have, if we if we want to do the trail, because like Commissioner Shook was saying, um, you know, we're we're not likely to get a trail if we don't build it now. Um so the, you know, so if there has to be a trail, I would prefer that there was some kind of loop where it was very apparent that, you know, like I I I wouldn't wanna go all the way up in there and then be like, you know, I just climbed this massive hill cuz I thought I could cut through to get to my house, um, you know, a few blocks up. Um that, you know, I would I would be exhausted and and particularly irritated. And um it's not a situation where, you know, again, cutting through a very specific subdevelopment and then um, you know, taking off up a very steep hill like that without having somewhere that I'm gonna go. I I wouldn't use the trail and that's, you know, I I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't make my own trail um in that situation. If there was a, you know, a Starbucks at the top, um, you know, the the, you know, that, yeah, maybe I would, I would make my own trail at that point. But um, you know, I I I just wouldn't, you know, there's nothing indicates to me that there's something up there for me to go and do or look at. Then um, you know, I I I wouldn't cut that trail. Uh um I I don't know why people would be up in there doing that kind of stuff. But that's me.
Yeah, so it this would mean that we would need to make a condition of the approval. And so would that condition be you need to have a sign that says that it dead ends? Or or is it the condition that you'd like it to be a loop? Cuz I think we're getting close.
Yeah, um frankly, um I I still like, you know, if 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 there has to be a trail, then I I would prefer a loop. Um, you know, there there would, there's, you know, managing expectations before I went in. Um the sign, you know, a sign might not get not be seen. Um, I don't know. Um and again, it's sort of like the trail that goes into the side of somebody, you know, somebody's fence. I I don't, I don't know why somebody would take that walk. Um but, you know, that's me.
All good. Commissioner Dick, you have your hand up again.
I do. Um I sit on the parks board and I'm with Tom on this. Um it's better to have a developer build that trail through there, which saves the city money. And it and it's um the loop to me is more invasive than a single trail. And a sign could just say that, um, you know, it's a, there is a dead end on that trail. But I think that that area is more for the people that are in that community right there. Um I don't think you're gonna get a lot of visitors driving all the way there to take their kids or their dog for a for a walk. But it's a great asset for the people of the um proposed community. And I think as the trail as proposed is good because, like I say, in the end, it saves the city and the parks money to already have it in there when future developments may go in. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Um, okay, commissioners, any more discussion? All right, so um as Agnes pointed out, the um the staff is looking for two motions. One is for the approval of the concept plant. And the other one is the approval of the detail plan with the approval conditions. So. And um if you want to make amendments on the detail plan for the shape or the existence of any trails, I will entertain those motions too.
Yeah, just a minor point. The second motion is also for the uh approval of the sensitive lands review and the subdivision and the other parts of the land use cases, not just the conditions of approval. Just wanted to make sure if somebody's putting their motions together that they include that.
Thank you for the reminder, Tom. Commissioners, any any motions?
So so just so I understand, what they're looking for was a consolidated plan development review, but we need to break that, the P D R portion into two pieces?
Yes, because uh they are consolidating the detail plan and the concept plan. So so I we, the staff is asking us to approve them separately. So the first one, the 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 concept plan should be pretty easy.
Yeah.
There's there's no approval conditions for that.
And this does not, does not go to city council, this is us.
Yeah, we 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 decide and.
So let me give it a shot. So I move for approval of concept plan, P D R twenty twenty one dash zero 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 two, and adoption of the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report based on the testimony received.
Okay, so Commissioner Robert moved that the planning commission approved case number P D R twenty twenty one dash two for the concept plan and the adoption of finding and in the staff report based on the testimony received. Any questions?
Any question?
No, any second?
I'll second it.
All right, Commissioner Watson seconded. So Commissioner, please take a second to find the raise hand button. Uh Commissioner Robert, can you temporarily mute your? Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So those in favor, please click on the, click on your hand. Those in favor, say aye.
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 So I see nine hands, so it's nine to zero. The motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Please low your hand. All right, so. Commissioner Roberts, are you still with us? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so Commissioner Roberts.
Frozen, yep.
Oh, there we go. Here is. I see him moving again. I can't hear you, John, sorry. Uh I can't, still can't hear you. Any other commissioner want to take a step in making the second motion, detail plan?
I can take a stab at it.
All right, Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead. So this is for detail plan, the the subdivision and the sensitive land review.
Okay. So I move for approval of the detail plan uh for application P D R twenty twenty one dash two. Uh since the land review, S L R twenty twenty one dash three and subdivision, S U B twenty twenty one dash two. Um and adoption of the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report based on testimony received.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. So Commissioner Jackson moved for approval of the detail plan in application, P D R twenty twenty one dash two, subdivision twenty twenty one dash two and sensitive land review twenty twenty one dash three and adoption of the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report based on the testimony received. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Watson second, thank you. So do we have any questions about the motion or anybody want to make any motion for amendment? Go ahead, Commissioner. Sure.
So we were, we talked a lot about making the trail into a loop, etc. Is this where we put an amendment if we wanted to? Do we want to put an amendment here?
Yes, so if you want to to move, to make amendment, you you can uh move for amendment to to uh to um to a, to make it into a loop, I guess, in track C. Would you like to make amendment?
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment of stubs that allow us to do that because I'm very afraid that there will be rogue trails. That's my fear.
Okay, so Commissioner K seven moved to amend the motion to to um convert to to make the track C pathway looped, but still with the stub connection stub. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Anybody want to second? Do I have a second? All right, so Commissioner Brad second. Commissioner Brad, are you, Brand, are you seconding?
Sorry, I'm having a little technical issue over here. Uh yes, I I second K seven's recommendation that we do the loop with the and keep the studs for future development.
All right, so we are only voting on the amendment to make the loop in track, to to make the pathway in track C a loop. Commissioner, those, please take a moment to find the hand. Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please keep your hands on. So those in favors are Commissioner Roberts, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner K seven, Commissioner Who, and Commissioner Brand. All right, please lose your hand. So those are five. Those oppose, please raise your hand. So those those oppose, please say nay.
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 All right, please keep your hand. So those oppose are Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Shook, Commissioner Kinones and Commissioner Miranda. So the motion to amend passes five to four. All right, so please lose your hand. So this is voting for the original uh motion moved forward by Commissioner Jackson and um second by Commissioner Watson. Commissioner, please take a few seconds to click on the raise hand button if you want to vote in favor. I'm having technical. All right, so those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All right, so it's all nine commissioners voting yes. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more statement I need to read. If you wish to appeal, please contact the planning division for an explanation of of appeal requirements. All right, thank you so much. All right, so um next item, as Tom mentioned, um does the briefing will now be happening tonight, so let's move on to other business.
Yes, good evening. Um so there's still some hands up to.
Commissioner Roberts and then Miranda.
Or those leftovers from the voting, I'm I'm not sure.
Yeah, there we go.
So yeah, sorry about the um, we'll get the housing briefings rescheduled either next month or possibly April. Um it it wasn't able to work out with the uh senior planner, Skylar Warren, tonight. So we'll get that rescheduled. Um I don't have any other uh business for tonight. You've all gotten the um the the most updated rolling calendar. I believe Dory made a adjustment to it just today or just before the meeting started. So um you should have that. We've got the one hearing um that's been continued. And then uh we have a couple more, uh and I I think it should start to slow down uh probably looking at more of a normal schedule. And once we get through February, we'll get back to the normal Monday, first and third Mondays as well. So. Yeah, so unless you have any questions for me, um I am still working on getting the uh joint meeting with the city council put together for March. Uh where we'll have a briefing, well, it's actually more of a briefing. Um it's on the Tiger Made Project and we actually have some very specific policy questions that we want to ask you. And it'll give you actually something fairly meaty to have a discussion together and with the city council members on. So looking forward to that.
Well, I I I found that during today's meeting, the 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 applicant's presentation, the video presentation is really helpful, at least for me personally, because it's really hard for me to visualize three D um object, you know, based on this two D uh printing. And um that's why I had to drive to the site to look at it myself because I I if before, if I didn't drove there, if I didn't drive there, I would not know how steep the place is. So so in the future, is it possible to request the applicant like to send like a CAD file so they can convert into three D and we can we can play around on 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 our own computer? I guess we can ask them.
Uh well, so far, we haven't put anything like that in the code. Um because that's a little more sophisticated to produce, I believe, a little more expensive. And I I don't think everybody. that's a little more sophisticated to produce, I believe, a little more expensive and I, I don't think everybody, um, has capability to do that. So we're, we're not quite that far along, but, um, we can suggest it, like in a pre-op conference, suggest it that it's very helpful um, for the public and for the planning commission and the decision makers if they have something like that or can put something like that together and submit with their application. I think that's perfectly reasonable to ask, to suggest in a pre-application conference. Which, you know, all of the subdivisions, plan developments have to go through pre, pre-op conferences anyway, so.
Yeah, I believe Wade, oh, go ahead. Jump right in.
Yeah, speaking as the architects, yeah, a lot of, um, I don't want to speak for, for the presenters, but, um, yeah, yeah, uh, a lot, a, a lot of smaller firms that would be doing these kind of development projects, they, um, are probably working in AutoCAD and can't, uh, you know, it's not an easy translation to something in three D, especially with, um, topography. Um, like, I, I'm a commercial architect, so I, I work in Revit and, you know, three D, three D modeling, um, fairly commonly, um, and even then it's uh, that program is not very good at interpreting topography. Um, the, um, and, and one, one comment that I, I wanted to make about that is, um, yeah, I, I appreciated, I appreciated that they did that, um, and, and I apologize, this is not meant to be negative, but at the same time, it was sort of like, um, not updated to reflect the current design, which, um, could confuse people more than, um, than, um, health matters, um, and there's the potential of, of approving something you, you think is in this that you think you're approving, you're approving something in three D, um, but it's actually not what's reflected in the two D drawings and the two D drawings are the ones that are the actual permitted, you know, permitted documents, um. So it, it's a little bit complex, um, another, another, um, kind of two other ways to, uh, go at this that might help, um, that, you know, understanding things in three dimensions is, um, Google Earth, so, you know, if, if, um, if, uh, you know, we could go into Google Earth and look at the lot in three dimensions there, um, there also, um, which I've talked about in the, I think, one of our recent, recent, um, commission meetings is, is precedence, um, and, uh, or, you know, photo, or for that matter, photographs of the site, um, with, you know, two D um, images of, of the home sort of imposed over, over photographs, um, so it, there's a lot of ways to do it, but, um, yeah, I, I definitely understand the desire to understand things in three dimensions.
Wade?
Yeah, uh, you know, just, you, you're totally right, it is very difficult to get an accurate representation at this stage of the game, but what you want to try and what we're trying to do is give that, 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 that thirty foot, thousand foot view and say, hey, this is kind of the, this is the swatch that we're gonna do and this is kind of the general layout, um, you can't make it a hundred percent accurate right now, you know, we're not that far along. But, um, the, the feedback is good for us, I mean, we do this on, on all subdivisions at this point and over the last couple of years and it has been positive and it, it, you know, it's, you're right, it's not, it's not exactly perfect, the trees aren't exactly where they're supposed to be, but, but it's to the best of our ability at this stage of the game. Once you have a full topography done, then you can, you can do these pretty efficiently too. Um, and you can pull stock house plans that we've done before or architects have used and, and impose them onto the project to get it, uh, as clear as a picture as we can make, you know?
Yeah, it, it's just ma- making sure that the commission understands that the two D drawings are what we're, we're approving. Um, and Tom.
Yeah, definitely.
But, but that three D model is not a legal document, um, which, uh, and again, I totally see the benefit, I understand why it was, you know, why it was shown, I understand why, uh, you know, and, and they, the applicant did a good, a good job at kind of like, you know, that these trees aren't accurate, this house is different from what we're showing, et cetera, you know? Um, couching things in that way, but, um, realizing that one, we're approving the two D drawings and then, you know, and that there's the potential for, um, you know, somebody recording that, you know, looking at the recording of this or, you know, like, well, you showed me this, you know, this house had windows on this side or, or it was eight stories and it was three store, it turned out to be three stories, there's the potential of legally people getting upset, um, that they were not, you know, that something was misrepresented, um, in, in that situation, so, um, but, um, Tom will, you know, uh, uh, I'm sure the, the city has, um, their own, their own experiences with that.
Asha?
Thank you, um, actually, I must directed at Tom, um, uh, and about codes, and so, um, we have had a few of these in my tenure now, um, subdivisions looking for exceptions due to public benefit and would like some direction on what codes I could go look at because these trails and parks are mostly what we get as that public benefit and understanding, you know, the parameters of that would be helpful to me, um, and, um, and then secondarily, like, how, how do we suggest changes to the code? Is that just every once in a while or, you know, if we really gotta bug up our, you know, could we come and say to the council, I want to change this code because I'm really for, you know, permeable sidewalks, you know?
Yeah, so, uh, that, let's try and tackle that question first, um, any number of ways, uh, you, as an individual commissioner, you can sort of tally up things in the code that sort of bug you and, uh, at, at times like this, you can ask about that. The commission itself, you're the policy decision-making body for the city of Tiger, so as a group, if you see something that is really off because you've seen, you know, case after case after case and as a group you don't like it, you can then vote on that and suggest to us, or you can send a representative to city council or, you know, either way, um, that council direct us to look into it. You could direct us to look into it. I, we also have, um, couple of projects coming up. Um, it's, it's, it's gonna be delayed, it's not the next project in line, but we are going to do an overhaul of our, our land division, uh, chapters, so that's subdivision, partitions, lot line adjustments, and again, take another look at the planned, uh, development chapter, I think, and so that would be a place where we could look to make some changes or adjustments as you see fit. The, you know, this is the reason, back to your first question, if that answers your second question. Uh, this is the reason why these plan developments are still coming to the planning commission is because that decision about, that's what a plan development is all about, that's why we have it, that's why developers use it, the whole idea, this is the perfect situation, the whole idea is this balancing of, instead of cutting everything down, blowing up a whole hillside to build, you know, standard large lots with single detached houses, we allow them to change the development standards, to put the houses closer together, you know, to make the streets smaller, to do all of those things in order to balance that by allowing them to, or, or allowing the public to have a larger green space that's remains or to have these, um, and rather than us try to propose the entire laundry list of, of, uh, I can get no echo. Rather than us proposing an entire laundry list of what those public benefits what might be, we allow the applicant to propose some things that might fit that particular site. Might be relevant to their application. And yeah, it's wide open discretionary criteria, that's why we have all of you here to kick it around and discuss it, um, and make decisions on those discretionary criteria and balancing. And, you know, the, the public benefit really, it really needs to be tied to, when you're thinking about it, you should be thinking, it needs to really be tied to the standards that are being adjusted. So in this case, you know, the vast majority of the standards were pretty much interior focused. Lot shapes, um, frontages, sides of yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, so what, um, what impact does that having? Who is it impacting? These are the questions that you need to think about in your mind. And, um, is that okay? Given the trade-offs for this presumably, probably something natural associated, but there could be other things. There could be other benefits.
Is there ever a time where we can like hash this out as a commission, like to talk about the benefits of parklets versus extra sidewalks, you know?
We could, I could put it on agenda if you guys would, just want to talk about it outside of a speci-, you know, because it's so hard to talk about specific cases because it's lots of judicial, you can't talk about it ahead of time. Sure, we could have a, just to have a, a work session where we just talk about plan developments and what are the ins and outs of public benefit versus the types of things that get adjusted or asked for.
I would very much appreciate that when we have time.
Yeah. Yeah, if it gets slow again, we're looking for things to do. That's definitely top of the list because, you know, it does come up a lot because we have a lot of planned developments and there's, you're, I just finished reading a staff report today, you're gonna get an even bigger one coming, so with even more of those questions.
I'm excited to see some of them coming, coming up there, they're starting to be built, and so I'm excited to see them in action so that I have, uh, an opinion.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's, there's some other questions that are somewhat related to that. Um, I guess your decision is over for this one, so for instance, when a criteria says, um, fits in with the neighborhood character. That's, that's such a big wide open thing and what exactly is the neighborhood character that we're talking about? Are we talking about it as simply as residential? It's residential, so what they're proposing is residential, so therefore it meets the neighborhood character? You know, with House Bill two thousand one passed by the senate, or passed by the Oregon legislature with the code changes we've done for missing middle housing with additional things that are coming down that are being required of us by the state legislature and the governor, you know, there's no such thing in Oregon as a detached, single dwelling neighborhood anymore. It's just, it's not, it's, it's gone. And that's, applies to every city and county in Oregon, it's not something we can change. You know, right now, in Tiger, if it has a vacant lot up there adjacent to some of these houses, somebody could go in and build triplex without having to go through a plan development or any kind of a land use review, so you know, is that something we would consider as the surrounding neighborhood or the surrounding community and for something, you know, that's probably not something we would consider anymore. Um, but then, you know, you've got, that, that's something we can talk about, you know, we can kick around. What does that mean? And, and for your, just for your, to understand how these things work, one of the things that we do if it's, um, if there's a kind of a question at all, or, or we're having an issue with an applicant wrangling with them over what something means, the city has, the, 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 uh, legal precedent is the city council has deference over what they want their code to mean. So when we have things like that sometimes, and if there's any question at all, you'll, you should see in a staff report where we would say in the staff, you know, meets the, you know, does it fit in with the character of the neighborhood? And staff interprets the character to mean and we will just lay it right out there. Just list it all out. So from time to time, if it's an issue, if that's, when we know it's an issue, we will try to lay it out that way, just as a guide, so, but it's a good question to have a discussion about.
We can just, we can have a discussion in a retreat in Hawaii? Alright, Jake, you have one, we have something else?
Just very, very briefly, it's ten PM, so, um, I'm sure. But, um, I, I just wanted to, like, intro, or kind of bring up the idea of, um, you know, the, of, yeah, plant, tree planting as, as a potential, um, way of sort of mitigating, like, um, the um, cutting trees down, um, you know, like, uh, Darlene and I have been kind of talking about in this, um, so, you know, hot, you know, it, it, providing some sort of landscape design that, that addresses erosion, you know, erosion prevention um, in these kind of situations when you have, when you're removing, um, a lot of trees that are essentially, you know, the structure and water and water abatement, um, i- issues on this hillside and you're taking that out, um, does the, you know, is the landscaping addressing that? Um, and, um, you know, and that as a potential, um, potential, uh, sort of public good, um, improvement that, um, could, could counterbalance, um, but additional density as well.
We, um, we could, we can add that to the conversation, although, um, that's pretty much required, the it's just that you never, you don't see the details of the detailed planting plan or a detailed tree planting plan or, you know, the erosion control plans, that tends to happen toward the, you know, the eighty percent drawings or, uh, as we're approving the public facility improvement permit and the building permits.
Okay.
So a- and again, because um, they generally don't want to spend the money to do that kind of a detailed thing at this point in time and they're not quite sure where everything is gonna be. You know, even sometimes we'll have street tree plans, you'll see. And a lot of times even those get moved around a little bit because, uh, you know, that's the way it happens, a water meter gets put in, it has to go in a certain place and then we have to move the tree and, so, anyway, but let's, let's add that to the list of things to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I'm a commercial architect, so, um, I, I don't, you know, I just don't know what the residential requirements are for that kind of, you know, for these developments in terms of, um, you know, and like the West Hills in Portland have a lot of issues with landslides and, and, you know, um, those sorts of things and so um, it's not only just, you know, preserving the deer habitat or, or what have you, it's, um, you know, sort of like, uh, understanding what tho- that code is and so I don't have to like worry about it or or gripe about it in these meetings, I can go, oh yeah, they're, they're gonna look at that and, and, um, and it's all gonna be safe and good and, and, like, you know, nice planting and things.
Yeah, erosion control definitely is very tightly regulated, uh, by us and Clean Water Services through regulations. The inspections are all the time, um, yeah, and, you know, the, the slides and things in the West Hills, ninety percent of the time, it's because of bad stormwater. And a lot of that comes in sometimes after houses are developed, when the, when the homeowner is, you know, doing something and then they add something on and they just run this pipe over here and then, pretty soon, yeah, so, okay.
I just had one tiny little comment about that and the trees, replanting of trees helps with that erosion factor, it, it's because when you remove that many trees, um, in, in areas, no matter where it may be, I know, I live in one of those housing developments and I'm at the bottom of the hill and when you get a twenty thousand dollar bill to redo under your home for water management and to dig out and replace the vapor barrier, et cetera, that's really important to have drainage and, and, um, and or um, trees, vegetation to absorb the excess water when you're putting in homes on a hillside.
But, so, some of this might just be an education, you know, like, it would be good for us, for the commission to have just a little bit of an education on, on those sorts of requirements. Um, in particular, you know, it, yeah, we're not gonna be dumping a bunch of stormwater off of the, you know, off of, off of our new street, um, onto the neighbor's property and, and, um, they're gonna have
onto the neighbor's property, and, and they're gonna have to buy an extra, you know, pump for their basement, et cetera. So, yeah, just sort of, this is what we do in terms of, you know, as a part of the permitting process, it would probably help us out a lot.
Okay, we can have a retreat in Hawaii. It's done.
Okay.
Alright, it's getting late, so. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Next week, have a good night, meeting adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, Kealan. See ya.